Five o'clock and we do appear to have a quorum, so welcome to the meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board for March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Riva, if you would please call the roll.
Sure. Badeneth, Lycala?
Here.
Baltazar, Deanna Santana. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Present.
Keith Furman. Margaret Bergamini. Randy Udell.
Here, President.
And Tom Wilson.
Here. Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum. If one of our tech facilitators could please continue with our virtual meetings opening statement.
All right, welcome to our Transportation Policy and Planning Board virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video for the purposes of quorum and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email list in today's agenda. Chair of the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. First item then is approval of minutes from our February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Assuming all board members have had a chance to review those if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Badri, thank you. Is there a second? Again by Chris McAhill. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it'll go down as unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda?
I have no people registered.
Thank you, Riva. Do we have any communications disclosures or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first item for the evening then. Legisstar seven zero four eight three, Director's Report.
Great. I'll take a couple of minutes because some good things have happened, so I just want to highlight them. One is, you know, with the passage of the Appropriations Bill, I believe it was last Thursday, that bill contained the funding for Madison's East West BRT, okay, and we were recommended for funding last in May of two thousand and twenty-one. So basically, the funding is now available, and once we complete our environmental document and our third-party agreements, we can enter into a funding agreement with the FTA. And so that's a big deal. We are moving forward with our environmental document, and that hopefully will be released relatively soon. We just got the historic or the section one oh six sign off. The sixty percent plans are nearing completion. We would like them to introduce them into council, perhaps by the end of March. It's a consultant is a, may not have them ready by then. It's a, if you think about it, it's about a hundred million dollars worth of improvements, and so it's a pretty significant effort, and they're working hard on it. And so we'll see what we can get out of that. And then one thing that was just announced today is that Metro Transit just was awarded a six-point-four-million-dollar facilities grant. And so that's fifty-nine thirty-nine B grant, and so that was just announced today, so that's, you know, six-point-four-million dollars that we don't have to borrow. Six-point-four-million dollars that we don't have to pass on, you know, to our partners because it's federally paid, so that's a good thing. The staff evaluation of State Street Campus Garage Proposals is basically complete, and it'll be presented at the Finance Committee next Monday. I won't be there for that presentation because I'll be out of the office. The, that will probably be discussed in closed session. However, the staff evaluation will be in Legisstar, and so it'll be open for anyone to review. We are working on some long-term leases for parking garages, and the city is pursuing an option for housing the PEOs, a new facility on Pennsylvania Avenue, and so that holds promise, and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll find out if we get to move forward on that. Other things, you know, the Wisconsin DOT is moving forward with studies both on Stoughton Road and the interstate study. I'm preparing an email to them for that. Glacial Drummond Trail Extension. For twenty years, we have not been able to connect the Capital City Trail with the Glacial Drummond in Cottage Grove, and a lot of it's been due to complications with railroad right-of-way and getting underneath the interstate. And I'm just going to say, as an East Sider, it's been disappointing for me. And it was so, to the point of really almost, it was a lost cause, but I'm going to say through some collaboration with Dane County, and I'm going to say some leadership with the Wisconsin DNR, and, you know, Bridget Brown has been extremely helpful on this. There may be a chance for us to get that connection and at least get it underneath the interstate. And if that happens, that would be really huge, just really huge. Passenger Rail, we released an RFP for station location services about a week ago, and we'll receive proposals on that. The TDM ordinance. I'd like to highlight, we've been working through some of the details. We have a new staff attorney who's working with us on this. That staff attorney has brought up some good issues. We've interacted with my cause, the lead attorney, you know, for the city. We think that we're probably, the ordinance is all resolved, and we'll be able to probably introduce, hopefully, on March twenty-ninth. As far as the other items, the Network, Transit Network redesign team has been very active, and you've been probably seeing some of the emails and the activities associated with that. And then the Vision Zero Action Plan has been submitted, and it will be presented right after when I get done talking. The National League of Cities had a nice write-up of our Vision Zero efforts. It was a small write-up, but it was still nice to be highlighted by the National League of Cities, and so I gave the link of that in the Director's Report. So that's it. Thanks for, there's just a lot of things happening, so I wanted to take the time to go through it. There's some good things happening, I think.
All right, thanks, Tom. Questions and comments? Alder Foster, you're up first. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, and yeah, I guess partly just want to acknowledge there is a ton going on. Great work, great news on funding stuff, and it's clear how much we're working on transportation stuff, so thank you and your team, Tom. Two quick questions. One was on the parking garage. You mentioned that's going to be closed session finance next week. Can you just speak a little bit to kind of what that, so there's, maybe just give a little bit of background of kind of where that process is at, and then I think there's this outstanding question about kind of final, you know, once someone is selected, and there are criteria around the applications, et cetera, but then really this kind of specific look around like capacity and some other questions related to the intermodal bus, et cetera, like when does Transportation Commission kind of get brought back in? And is there clarity around how they'll lead those kind of transportation questions with the future project?
Yeah, so the Transportation Commission will be invited to closed session on Monday, and I believe an email will be sent out today. A background on this is that there's a, there's four, you might say finalists, okay, and none of the finalists' proposals are perfect, right? Some have some circulation problems and the like. However, you know, interacting with purchasing, we couldn't go back to each proposer and say, well, could you do this differently, or could you do this differently, because then that kind of is, you know, it's not providing an even playing field, and so once a developer is selected, then perhaps finance and perhaps the council, I don't know if it's how that works, will authorize city staff to begin negotiations with that developer. Once those negotiations start, there are some things that the transportation staff would like to see different. Alder Foster, I know that you also have concerns over parking and how much is the right amount of parking, and I feel like those are legitimate questions that could be in play at that time, so.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, and yeah, I mean, I think the Transportation Commission kind of taken, you know, with that ultimate accountability, you know, for the parking utility and, you know, whatever investments we're making with new public parking. I mean, it sounds like there'll be plenty of opportunities, want to make sure everybody was aware of that, and that the financing decision is really about selecting a developer, and yes, kind of general concept, but there'll be, there'll be good opportunity for the commission to weigh in and help make sure we're making the right investments with the utility. So then the only other thing I had was on your other category. You, thanks for the update on the Stoughton Road. I've been kind of wondering where that one is at, so it sounds like they're maybe closing in on it. Was the Hepka Road and Milwaukee Street interchanges, is that, are you referring to the Stoughton Road interchanges of those two, or what is that bullet?
No, in two thousand and eighteen, before I was here, and before you and Alder, the council provided some money for interchange evaluations at two locations. One was the extension of Milwaukee Street, kind of in the Spreaker Road area. And then one also that's been of interest is up on Highway ninety-four, right by the, kind of in the UW Hospital area. And, and so we, before enlisting a consultant to do that, those interchange studies, we waited for, you know, the Wisconsin DOT has a very rigorous modeling procedure with parameters and calibration and validation, and so we said, well, we would wait for them to finish their model before we initiated our study. Whereas right now, the Wisconsin DOT said, basically, they've hired a new consultant to do the interstate study. They said that they will study these interchanges on their own as part of their study, that there may be some value to the state system by providing these interchanges. And then they also sent a letter kind of detailing their cost sharing policies. So that letter was incorporated, you're a member of the MPO, and so that letter was incorporated as part of the MPO packet, so that's, yeah, so.
So those two previously identified for, to review for potential connection to the interstate, state's going to take that over now as part of their ninety-four project, and we got info on how cost-sharing would work with such a thing.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, there's some, I think the Spreaker Road plan includes an interchange off of Milwaukee Street, and I think you're pretty aware of that one. The other one with UW Health, you know, my wife has just recently had some, you know, health issues where she's had to go to that campus, and I'm, that campus is actually used by, you know, patients from Minnesota to Illinois. It's kind of a more interstate regional medical destination, and so there's been a large interest in providing an alternate access to the American Center and specifically that health center.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds clearly interesting to see what they say. In either of the Stoughton Road, or, I mean, in the Stoughton Road one, you said we will, like, we will be involved or something. For the interstate one, is there, and I actually missed the meeting where we had the Beltline discussion, but it sounded like that was a really positive discussion. We had sort of formal reps from here to that. Would something similar happen with both the Stoughton Road and the interstate projects?
Yes, they're at the very beginning of their process with the Stoughton Road. And so we're interacting a little bit on the the ground rules for the study, so they haven't gotten to the point of asking our opinion yet, yet. You know, the state has an interest in giving Stoughton Road to the city. But that's, that's a considerable financial responsibility, like considerable, and and we would maybe be assuming that responsibility without really knowing what the end product is, like, you know, what will be built there, right? Maybe we'd be interested in that, but we don't know what's built there, so we're kind of interacting with them, saying, well, you know, we would like a broad range of alternatives explored, which include low-speed urban roadways. So that's, we're kind of interacting with them and saying, as you set up this study, we would like a pretty broad range of alternatives explored.
Well, I'll leave it at that. Maybe we can follow up after this a little bit. Obviously, just representing that area, that's going to note one as well, and, you know, the city's already sort of put out formal recommendations around moving in that direction, so just, that'd be a really critical one to stay close to with this body, so thanks for all the updates.
Yeah.
All right, Margaret, you up next? Go ahead, please.
Thanks for the report. Tom, I wonder if you could say a little bit more about the, what is it, six-million-dollar, the grant that was awarded today by the feds for capital improvement, the facilities grant. What exactly is that money going to go towards, and what's the cost share? And what's the timeline for the expenditure of those funds?
Yeah, I, we've submitted on two of these, so I can't remember if it's going to take help with Phase Three of eleven oh one or the Hanson Road. But it's, it's basically, these are projects that are already fully approved in our capital budget, and so it just replaces local money. Typically, these grants have a twenty percent cost share, but we had already planned on, you know, paying a hundred percent, so just getting this, if I get the announcement, let me yeah, the CMS, this is the official announcement, you know, it's one of, "The City of Madison Metro Transit will receive funding to rehabilitate its maintenance facility and administrative facility. The project will ensure a state of good repair so the transit system can continue to provide safe and reliable transit service for residents throughout Madison." So eleven oh one has basically four phases, the total about forty-million dollars. We've done about twenty-million dollars of those renovations, and so this provides six-point-four-million towards the next phase, and the next phase is roughly, I believe, about ten million.
And is that at an eighty-twenty split then, or?
I don't, I don't know what it is. I know the next phase is about ten million or so, so this six-point-four would be, we'd have more of a local share than that, right?
Okay, well, perhaps, perhaps for our next meeting, we could come back with some specifics on that. I know that there's been some arranging and rearranging of projects, obviously with Hanson Road coming up and things moving apace. And probably other things slowing down, I would imagine, with supply chain issues, so perhaps if we could get an update on the status of those capital projects, that would be appreciated.
Yeah. Or I, I will say that, I can give you that, this fully replaces City of Madison money. So this is not like requiring us to spend an extra twenty percent. This six-point-four-million dollars is replacing money that the City of Madison would have spent out of their own pocket, and it was already approved within our capital budget. So if, so it's, so I'm trying to convey this is, rather than adding a responsibility, it's actually really good because it just decreases our municipal borrowing, so. But I will give you those figures, or actually, I'll just give you that.
Okay, any additional questions, comments, or feedback for Tom on the Director's Report? Seeing none, thanks, Tom, for that. Next item, Legisstar six nine nine eight nine, adopting the Vision Zero Action Plan and directing staff to implement the recommendations in the plan.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So as the Vision Zero steering team make our rounds, going through the city boards, commissions, committees, on the Vision Zero Action Plan, I've been making some quick interactions about this. You know, I really don't feel the need to do it in front of all of you. You know, you all know very well, you know, the current safety crisis that we are going through, you know, both here locally and nationally, and you all are very familiar with, you know, the efforts responding to it through the Vision Zero lens. I just want to say that, you know, I really believe that, you know, Vision Zero has proven to be a very timely initiative for us. I feel it's started changing how the city and even larger community approach traffic safety. And in my opinion, it's making a positive impact as we are dealing with the unprecedented traffic safety challenge that we haven't seen for decades. You know, I believe, you know, everyone on the team really start to refuse to take a fatality as a price to pay for mobility. And we really believe that even one death is too many. So Tom mentioned, you know, the National League of Cities article, you know, that's a really nice recognition for, you know, all of our work here. And, you know, actually, our work was also recognized by the US DOT, so the US DOT Deputy Secretary Kudermanberg actually recognized Madison's good work when they announced their Vision Zero initiative, you know, on a national scale. I think that means a lot to be mentioned, you know, by US DOT, you know, at a national level. But, you know, we all know that, you know, we are far from being perfect. We are far from being done. Actually, I think, you know, it's just the beginning, you know, the action plan, really, you know, is a new beginning to tell us there is actually not lots more to do. So Renee and Ally will give you a very short presentation, you know, some of those, you know, you actually are already familiar with. And we intentionally make this the last stop before we head to the council for a final adoption. We want, you know, these boards as a lead on this. So we'll also give you a quick summary of what we heard from other boards, committees, and commissions. And hopefully, you know, we can head to, after tonight's meeting, after making necessary adjustments, we can make it to the council for final approval. I think tomorrow's the council meeting was canceled, so we're looking at the March twenty-ninth council meeting. So with that, I'll pass on to Ally and Renee.
All right. Just pulling up my presentation. All right, as Yang mentioned, Governor Nene, you're just going to give a brief presentation on the final action plan for Vision Zero. We'll briefly go over some changes made to the action plan from, or comments that we took into account from this past meeting in January when we brought this final action plan to you all. Also, briefly go over the approval timeline, some comments and suggestions from other committees and groups, and lastly, just give an overview of the accountability section. All right, some changes that we made since the last time we brought this to you all. We had that really good discussion about having that final date as two thousand and thirty, and we had that discussion on, you know, should we make it two thousand and forty? You know, instead of two thousand and thirty, because two thousand and thirty is a really aggressive goal, but we ultimately came to the conclusion that twenty-five, or two thousand and thirty-five was an appropriate goal. It gives us a little more time to focus on, you know, those improvements and get funding for improvements and whatnot, and so two thousand and thirty-five, we finalized on. We also changed the VMT reduction goal. We are making it similar or the same as the Dane County goal in support of that. Just make it, you know, very similar to that goal and not really be different from Dane County. Also, we had suggestions to add more information on the High Injury Network. Some of that wording was a little confusing and, you know, to really kind of highlight the injury, high injury network a little more. So we added more information on that as well as to the website, and we referenced that in the plan. So briefly, just the action plan approval timeline, we took this plan to, or, yeah, we introduced this to the common council in January, and then in February, we took this plan to the Transportation Commission as well as the Finance Committee. And then in March, or early this month, we took it to the Board of Public Works, as well as the Public Safety Review Committee. But with the Public Safety Review Committee, they requested an annual traffic safety report as an amendment to the approval. So that was, so this was approved, but with that amendment. And then we're here approving this, and then in late this month, we'll finalize this at common council. All right, so with going to those other committees, we had some feedback and discussion. And we have not implemented this in our action plan, but we are definitely taking these suggestions into account and really applying this to any future plans as well. So we just had that discussion as well with that final date for changing to twenty thirty five. So they just recommended having those intermediate goals and targets might be useful to really show that we're serious about Vision Zero and serious about making changes. Also, to try not to, you know, get hung up on that date. Since it is just a date, you know, what's really important is having that accountability, accountability report, you know, every year and showing what we've been doing. Because this is a year-to-year basis, and every year we want to make those improvements to, to save lives and reach that goal of zero. Other strategies, strategy suggestions, we, someone brought up, you know, focusing on vehicle size and like weights and design. So we'll take that into account with our fleet section, you know, that is kind of, it is an important thing since we are seeing a lot more SUVs and trucks on the roadways. So we'll definitely address that in the future. Also, strategies around vehicle prohibitions or special charges. Also, someone brought up alcohol policies. I think it was, you know, it was mentioned a little bit in the safety focused enforcement section, but it is, you know, a big issue, of course. That should be highlighted as something to focus on as well. And lastly, outreach suggestions, all throughout board, you know, outreach was very highlighted and, you know, really try to get this out into the public. And, you know, I think there's been a little bit of a lack in, you know, outreach, you know, due to COVID. So after, you know, since COVID restrictions, you know, is lifting, I think we'll, you know, we'll be getting way more onto the public, having in-person stuff. I mean, I think this will, you know, really get out to the public a lot more. All right, I'll hand it over to you to talk about accountability.
All right. So you would have seen these when we were here before, but I think the one thing that we've heard continuously throughout this process and then as we've been going forward with this approval is that the most important thing is being accountable and making sure that we're being transparent and upfront with how we're doing on reaching our goal of eliminating fatal and serious crashes. So as we've talked about before, we'll have these performance metrics. We'll have an annual report that will be very public facing. It obviously will be coming here, but it will really be something for every within, everyone in the community to see if we're headed in the right direction and if we are really making an impact with this program. So we'll have something for each of the areas, safe streets, safe people. Next slide. And then our safe vehicles, data equity, and safety for focused enforcement sections that we will be working on now that the action plan is done and would have our first one at the end of this year that would go out to the public as well as all the interested committees, stakeholder task force, staff teams, et cetera. Right, next. And then obviously for accountability and implement, and implementation, I mean, that's really the important part is this Vision Zero Action Plan is a living document, so what's in it? It isn't static, it is going to change, and that is because we're going to have a lot of people involved in this program. Obviously, the mayor and common council play a very big role approving the action plan, but also in ensuring that we have budget going forward into the future and that our policies and projects are being approved. Here at the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, we're getting biannual updates. And you'll really be looking at the strategies and actions more in depth, and if we're meeting those target goals for years and other metrics. So that will be super important as we move forward to make sure that we're on the right track and that we have the resources that we need. And that if there are things that we need to add in and start doing, that we're talking about those. So those action plan updates, that living document. And I think the last time I mentioned, you know, a lot of people are doing updates every few years because things change, they see what's working, and they want to make sure that they're addressing those. And obviously, you guys will be thinking about Vision Zero as a review, review policies that are coming along and making sure that they fit within that framework of Vision Zero. The Transportation Commission is also a huge partner in Vision Zero, not just the High Injury Network, but also they are overseeing the funding, which is within a program called Safe Streets Madison that was recently redone to put that focus on eliminating serious and fatal crashes. And we've already had our first review of projects and funded thirty nine, thirty eight of which were on the High Injury Network. So they will have a big role to play. They also will approve just all the other projects that come through with that Vision Zero lens, and then they get their quarterly traffic safety reports. Then, of course, the Board of Public Works, when we met with them, you know, reminded them of keeping that lens of Vision Zero in mind as they're doing project reviews. And then the Public Safety Review Committee, which we had our first Vision Zero presentation with the action plan approval, and they were very interested in also having traffic safety reports so that they're aware and make sure that they are on top of how we're doing with Vision Zero as well. All right. And then, of course, we will continue to have our Vision Zero staff team. We aren't going away because we have the action plans on. Indeed, we'll probably be busier now. Making sure that we are doing the implementation, managing the project, making sure that the things that we're saying that we're doing in year one, two, five are happening and that we also are getting a handle on how we're going to be reporting out and making sure that that outreach and we're making communication so the public understands and knows why we're doing this and can see the successes. And then we do have a stakeholder task force. They serve as our ambassadors. They help to guide the Vision Zero Action Plan. And we've begun talking with them now about how they can help guide the project into the implementation phase to make sure that we're making the best use of their skills and their connections and that we're still getting that community feedback from them. So there's many roles that people will play in implementing this. It's not one person or one group. It's really everyone. All right, next. All right, and we kept it pretty brief today because you guys have had the most sort of reports on this of any of the other committees. And so we wanted to keep it brief, but have some time for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We do have some registrants. I will read them off here. We have a Barbara J. Rayber, fifty seven oh six Cedar Place, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. A Blaine Harvey, fifty six oh nine Elder Place, Madison, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Teresa Gears, fifty seven thirteen Arbor Whitey Place, Madison, opposition, not wishing to speak. Alice Erickson, fifty one oh nine Spring Court, Madison, opposition, not wishing to speak. Timothy Deal, fifty seven twenty nine Elder Place, Madison, opposition, not wishing to speak. And then we had one slightly later. We have a Holly Verrell. I don't have the address here, but in opposition, not wishing to speak. Okay, questions, comments? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Well, first, probably like many of you scratching my head about the proposed Division Zero Action Plan, but it looks like it's, they're all on District nineteen around Lake Minot Drive. So perhaps they are using this as a place to express dissatisfaction with proposed sidewalks with that project. But I did have a couple of questions on the plan. The, could somebody speak a little bit more to the VMT goal and aligning it with the Dane County number? And also clarify, is that VMT per capita reduction or overall VMT reduction or what? Yeah, a little more details on that.
Sure, I can maybe jump in. So, you know, and thinking about this, there were not a lot of city, there weren't city plans that had a particular goal in mind. But it just so happened as we were doing this, Dane County had done a lot of research around VMT and set something in their climate action plan, which obviously we want to support anyway. And it's actually overall, it's a super aggressive goal. So.
Reduction?
Yes.
Sweet. Let's do it.
So we felt like, obviously, the city plays the hugest, it plays a very huge role in that, and we can do a lot to support that. And it felt best to be aligned with that and be working in conjunction on this overarching goal rather than having sort of a goal that we had not put nearly as much time and effort into researching as they had. So we decided that working in tandem would be the best.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm glad that all worked out. I think everything else I have to say probably just goes into one bucket. So I was interested that PSRC was looking for maybe an annual report out of it, which kind of makes sense. There was this question or the feedback around the importance of intermediate goals and targets. And then, well, I think that kind of those two things, so my, my question or thought or idea is, could we get alignment for sort of all of those things, get it kind of everything on an annual cycle where we're getting, here's, here's the update. It would be a time, if you want to make any revisions to the action plan, you could put those forward at that time. But to share out whatever metrics we have, kind of current state, here's the latest VMT calculations. I'm thinking it could be, it could coincide with the, the annual crash report, you know, either like right after or whatever. I mean, you know, I think you can figure that out, but, and then that could potentially go to PSRC, obviously Transportation Commission and the board. And I would, I would probably throw Board of Public Works in that as well. I think it was really valuable to have that conversation there, and there's so many, you know, ultimately, project recommendations are coming through that body. So I think it's really important that they're staying connected with, with overall projects. So I think that would be my only recommendation is just give some thought and attention to really taking that as an annual opportunity to kind of revisit everything, make tweaks, et cetera. And the only other thing is for the intermediate goals, I'd also love to consider maybe like a five-year rolling kind of horizon, you know, just like we do with the tip, basically. If we're thinking five years out for what streets we're going to propose for reconstruction, I'd love to see our, our kind of broader, you know, little mid-range goals for the Vision Zero. You know, maybe we're sketching out three, four, or five years for that as well. So just thanks for all the great work. It's kind of incredible that we did this and such a great job without hiring a consultant. You know, I think most cities are paying a lot of money to do what was accomplished here, so my hat's off to Renee Alexandra at Yang. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of people that played a role in this, but I think it's a really good product. I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions, comments, or feedback? If not, I would entertain a motion to recommend adoption. Thank you, Badri. Looks like there's a motion to adopt, recommend adoption, a second by Randy. Any discussion? Badri, do you want to speak further to your motion? All right. Go ahead.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, all those in favor of recommending adoption of the Vision Zero Action Plan and directing staff to implement some recommendations in the plan? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Chair, please, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you so much to staff, as Alder Foster said. This is a really big deal. All right, then we will move on to Legisstar seven zero four three zero, TIP process update.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Phil Gritzbocker. I'm a planner with the Department of Transportation. I'm going to handle the first half of this presentation, then Chris Pedkowski will dive into the projects for the 2023 program. So I'm going to talk with you a little bit about the tip program process. I'm going to share my screen. Just one second. Okay, can you see this? Okay, very good. So there's been a desire to document our, our tip selection process for quite some time. And this is something that we've been working on, looking at a variety of plans that are out there, including some of our favorites, which include Minneapolis, which takes a really quantitative approach to screen their criteria, considers equity, and then takes a qualitative look at the projects before coming up with their, their, the capital improvement program, as well as Portland, which develops a candidate pool, uses their, their evaluation criteria and a number of factors, and then funding to develop their five-year CIP. We came up with a proposal, City Engineering came up with a proposal in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, which was similar to the Minneapolis program, which used a number of factors to evaluate capital projects and recommend them to move forward. And that includes facility ratings, safety, underground utility need, bike and ped facility need, equity, and then transit and green infrastructure. And as we've run these, we've realized that there are, are issues with the program and the process that, that has been developed, including that some of, some of the program, or some of the projects that are being forwarded, don't have the highest reconstruction need relative to other streets, and streets that have a reconstruction need aren't necessarily being forwarded in the, in the program, which defeats the key objective of the reconstruction program. It's also difficult to incorporate some of the utility needs that wasn't well-defined. And it's difficult to score certain categories, such as green infrastructure, where we may not have specifics as to which projects will have green infrastructure, well up into the future. It also doesn't consider development opportunities that come up and the needs associated with those projects with, with regard to pavements and utilities. And complicating things this year is that the, the, the capital projects are due to finance two months earlier than last year. So we've come up with a proposal for how to, to, to approach this year's program, which is basically to provide scores for the projects that are already in the tip with a few modifications based on pavement condition, equity, safety, and utilities. And this is the program that we would submit to finance next month. We're still working on a refined criteria, though, that we want to, to be able to present to you in the next, in the next couple of months. So this would be, we would like to pilot a multi-stage process that we could use for the tip next year, that would contain program, that would, that would contain projects from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. So these are the projects that were in the tip, and the scoring, you, you can see basically from a visual standpoint, anything that's darker scored higher, anything that's lighter scored poorly in this program. And I'll walk through some of the criteria that we used to, to evaluate this, and then the percentages that were, that they were weighted. So as I mentioned, green infrastructure is very difficult to store, so that was, that was not sort of part of this. But pavement, utility needs, safety, equity, bike, ped, transit needs were all factored into this. So going through pavement, which was thirty percent, you can see that there are, most of these streets in here have a high pavement need, high pavement, are poor pavement condition, though there are some that are moderate, and then a number of segments that are red, which would indicate that it's a one or a two that, that are not being addressed. And that is because of the, the weighting of the other factors. Utility played a pretty significant factor in this. The top map shows sanitary ratings. So that is driving some of these projects into the program, particularly this project here, the Eastwood, when it they go, project that's up there. And then the bottom is water rankings. So this is the, the, the core risk is identified by the water utility of the particular segments that we're going, that, that have been identified. And then safety, and one of the short kinds of, of, of the projects this year is that not many are on the, on the High Injury Network. A few of them touch the network, but many of them do not directly address that. A few of them touch the network, but many of them do not directly address that. And then equity is another factor that was considered, weighted with the other ones, and that is present that there is a need addressed in, in some of the projects, but many of them do not address the equity need. I believe four of the projects are directly addressing an equity need. Many of them are adjacent. Then bike pad, many of the projects address a bike pad need. So the blue lines right here are places that do not have sidewalks. The pink have one sidewalk on one side. And then the, the bike facilities are also in here as well, in the green, in the green dash lines. So that is something that has been addressed by many of these projects. And then we evaluated transit using the draft transit network, which is still being refined as part of the, the network redesign. So as was pretty evident in the first map with pavement condition, this, this challenge of addressing pavement needs is, is, is really what's driving our reconsideration of, of this, of this, of this program. And looking at our worst project, which, our worst scoring project, which was around the Circle Park on the, on the near east side, you can see that this pavement right here is in pretty poor condition. And this would, is scoring worse than, than most of the other projects. So that's something that we want to make sure that we're addressing these pavement and utility needs. But also, once, once we've identified those projects that have a pavement utility need, that we're addressing equity, safety, and bike and pedestrian needs as well. So we're exploring a number of things, and we've been iterating this now for a, a couple of months. For this, we're really focusing on the reconstructions, that's pavements and utilities with critical needs that would, would be addressed during the tip. Non-reconstruction projects, so pavements without critical needs would be addressed through Safe Streets Madison. So we're still going to address, you know, safety concerns to both programs and complete and green streets, once that's, once that's available. But that's the, kind of how they're divided between the two programs. So the revised process that, that we're, we're exploring would be one where the utilities submit their list of critical needs. And then we would develop a candidate list of projects based on pavements rated four or below. And then develop a list of candidate projects, an eight-year candidate pool, and assemble the projects into logical groupings, so that we are mobilizing in a way that makes sense. And then the part that we're still really working on quite a bit is the prioritization section, trying to figure out the best way to score these projects and weight them based on pavement, utilities, bike pad needs, transit, equity. And from there, once we have that, we would develop a scope for the projects and create a budget for the projects and be able to, to group them in the, in the Transportation Improvement Program. So in general, this would be a much more quantitative approach than, than we've had in the past. And certainly more quantitative than Safe Streets, which, which has a more qualitative approach, more, more interaction through the public to, to figure out where some of the, the issues and concerns are. And we've done a bit of this, and I want to show, this is kind of like the candidate pool of projects, if we were to use this pro- process. So what we've used to develop the candidate pool is the pavement condition and any platted roads, sanitary pipes where they're in poor condition, future stormwater, future stormwater facilities, and then where water pipes are in poor condition. So we've reached out to agencies from around the, the city to, to figure out where those needs are and, and found the most quantitative way that we could find that. And this is where we would draw our, our, our projects from and run our, our criteria on these roadway segments. And as I mentioned, after we have that pool, we would prioritize based on safety, equity, bike and ped transit, with consideration for eminent utility and pavement needs. That would be a significant consideration, considering that there's a water main break, for instance. That might be something that, that we have to address right away. And we obviously want to weight this based on safety and equity and elevate those projects, so that we are reconstructing in a way that's equitable and addresses safety needs. So the next steps from here on out are to determine the appropriate scoring and screening and waiting, or the appropriate scoring and waiting for all of the different criteria that I mentioned, and then run the process on approximately eight years worth of projects. We're hoping to report that out to TPPB in April or May of this year. And with that, I will turn this slide, this over to Chris Pedkowski with a look at this year's program.
Is there value in breathing right here and taking a pause and then just getting some comments on this before we dive into individual projects, maybe?
I think it's a good idea, Tom. I got a couple of hands up. Alder Foster, go ahead.
I'd like Chris to go first. I'm always the first one to speak.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. So I guess I'm trying to digest this. So like, the idea of like data-driven prioritization for the entire tip is pretty new. Anywhere, not just in Madison, but like asset management is, is a pretty, you know, established practice. So in trying to overlay the two, like, isn't there, talking with engineering, I'm sure there's an asset management program in engineering. So isn't there like a way to figure out the, the best place within the existing asset management program where there is some wiggle room? Where there, you know, there's like a, you know, we have a list of projects we want to do, but we're not sure about this bunch, which ones to do first? And isn't that where, where the system should fit in?
You, who, who should answer this? Chris?
Yeah, you know, we do have asset management system and a lot of.
You're sounding a little robotic. I don't know if there's something loose or.
If anything, it's worse.
Maybe log out and log back in. It's quite bad.
Perhaps I can provide a little background while he logs back in. The engineering has really good asset management in their, as a GIS database, but integrating that with these other aspects of safety and equity. Safety and equity have always been considerations, but they've always been done kind of after looking at the asset management. And so, and I'm going to say that it's been a little bit more subjective. You know what I mean? Like they'll say, well, we have this list of projects, let's do these first. This tries to provide a little bit more structure to a process that they've already done and probably provide a little bit more metrics, you know, place metrics on it rather than a subjective incorporation of equity and, and safety, if, if you know what I mean. And Chris, you might, you can add perhaps?
Yeah, I would add a little bit. Is it any better now? Yeah, okay, good. So one, one thing I'd say is, is I don't know that we did kind of safety after the fact, but we, we, we would get requests from traffic engineering and we would just do them, right? But now I have like a whole city of high injury network, right? Like, like, like before, someone would say, you know, oh, we gotta, we gotta do something at South Point and, and, and Mirror Point, right? Like there was a, there was an issue there. We, we put a signal in. So now we have a whole high injury network. We have the Vision Zero. We have all this stuff driving us and, and, and I think we're just trying to get, get a little bit better way to try to prioritize these things. So, but yeah, it, we do have our own asset management and, and that drove. You know, it's, it's a lot of the same things, but now it's, there's just so much data available. We're just trying to process it all and put that into a priority matrix.
Thanks. I guess I'm just restating what, what you've, the, the challenge that you have run into, which is like, you still need to make sure that like when something gets critical, it's being worked on in time while balancing everything else. So, yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks for the work on this. I think the idea of kind of separating out sort of asset management tip, need to fix it because it's broken from the sort of more elective kind of, kind of projects is a good, is a good strategy. I, I'd even go as far to say, I mean, to the degree, let me back up. I think at the end of the day, well, I don't know if you've had any conversations or any thoughts, but I think for policymakers, then how, how much do we want to fund? Right? Like, what's our standard for the asset management side? And how willing are we to live with a little bit more broken roads? If we could invest those dollars in a safety project or a connectivity project? I think that will be, it'll be good to talk through that and to think about that and how, how that gets presented to the mayor and then to the council around, you know, kind of which of these buckets do you want to, do you want to tip in which direction? I think that actually feels really good. And if we're doing that, I also wonder a little bit if we need to go too deep on the, on sort of the Board of Public Works side, on the, on the, you know, fixing the broken stuff side. I mean, that kind of is what it is. And like, I don't know how much value you're going to get in looking at sort of other things. I mean, there's some, there's some wiggle room in there, I guess, right? You could like swap one project a year or two ahead of a different one. But when you're at the point where you've got broken utilities and things are such a mess, like, I guess I'm not totally sure how much that should really change that side of it. And if, if the goal is to try and shift overall some of our investments towards the, the more safety, et cetera, then I think, again, I think we do at that high level and don't, maybe we don't have to worry so much about other filters or calculations or add-ons on that kind of more, we got to fix the broken stuff side of things. So that's, I guess, just a general comment, and then really emphasizing more than maybe for having more discretionary funds. And, and that's where we really are able to make more investments related to equity, related to safety, et cetera. The other thought was, I mean, I think in that same vein, you know, this, this group doesn't bother itself with that asset management side so much, but you know, the whole chip ceiling program, for example, you know, Board of Public Works just got some good information on that recently. You know, is there an opportunity there to, to even invest harder on that side to try and stretch projects out a little bit further to get more money for, again, for that sort of the other side, the other bucket? So I think there's, I think if that, if we, if there's some direction given at a, at a council level, ultimately, I'm confident that staff could then implement those things kind of in, in the right way. I think using SSM to drive this sort of new bucket makes a ton of sense. I mean, anybody that, that participated in or heard the conversations at Transportation Commission, I mean, that, I think that, that new program's going to do a great job of identifying really, really good and important projects that are also, that we can't solve real well with lightweight fixes. And so I think that program is ultimately just going to generate a lot of really good candidate projects on the high injury network that we don't have to then wait for them to come up with pavement ratings, et cetera. So I feel, I feel quite confident that that program, and if we, and if we're explicit about it, say, yeah, great. And we've even started talking about that, like, these go in the category of they need a project fleshed out for them. And so I think, I think we're on, on the path actually with all of that. So I guess, big picture, I, I like what you've presented here. I think we're going down the, the right route. And maybe we, I'd be okay personally with continuing to kind of separate those two things out a bit and highlight this big, this bigger budget question of how much in this bucket, how much in that bucket, what are the trade-offs? Could we, could we postpone some projects on this side to get some more money now for projects on this side? I think that gives us, gets us going where, where we were trying to go with it. Thanks for all the work.
All right, any further questions or feedback at this point? Not seeing any new hands up, so Chris, I think you're good to continue.
All right. Are folks seeing the slide here? Yep, okay, great. All right, so again, Chris Pedkowski with the City of Madison Engineering Program, or City, City Engineering. So one of my duties is to kind of put together the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the, essentially the budget for all the street projects. And we, we just heard from Phil quite a bit on, on how we're trying to improve the program and, and help with the scoring and help with the project selection. And what I'm going to do here is show you kind of the projects that already were in the tip from, from previously and, and propose to, to continue forward. The way I usually do this is go around areas of the city and kind of lay out what, what's in the program already. And if people have questions, you can either do them at the end or jump in when you, when you, during the slide is fine as well. So starting in the downtown area, we've got a, a few of projects we've been working on, on the east side of the square. The Wilson and Broome Street project with where we'll be implementing the first part of the, the cycle track that's approved to go and be installed on Wilson Street on the 300 block. And then also some multi-use path on Broome Street that, that would be reconstructed next year, 2023. And also looking at coordinating with the Judge Hill Square project and finishing off the streets on the, on the east side of Wilson here. We have a block and a half of Dottie to do yet and two blocks of Wilson Street. So we would, not sure, working with the developer, if these would best fit in 23 or 24, but I'm showing them for next year, just, just in case we do have to coordinate them and get that, that stuff done along with the hotel and apartment project. Again, this would extend that, that cycle check option that we have approved on Wilson, as well as reconstruct the pavement on Dottie and one block of Nickney, which has mostly been done, but still doesn't have a surface or the proposed median in yet. Just a reminder, this is not part of really the future tip anymore. This is a project, Blair Street and East Wash that's starting in a couple of weeks. So Blair Street will be reconstructed from Washington to Williamson Street, including the improvements at the Willie Street intersection and also one block of East Wash constructed. Next, we have a West Main Improvement. So this is a project on West Main Street that was, we applied for tap one for and will be putting out for bid later this, this year and construction in 23. That includes a bike boulevard components on West Main Street, new flasher at Crowdfit to get across, and then markings and bump outs along the way here. And we're also proposing in our resurfacing program to resurface the pavement all the way up to, I believe, Fairchild Street to get, to get, and get a more bike boulevard, the fresh pavement and, and new markings down for that whole stretch. John Nolan Drive, the project that we have applied for STBG federal funds and were awarded that. So that includes reconstruction from North Shore down to Olin Avenue. There will be reconstruction of the pavement, reconstruct the multi-use path, looking at widening that multi-use path for pet and bike facilities. Also includes potential replacement of six bridges on the Fos Way, three northbound, three southbound bridges. Those bridges are nearing the end of their service life and due for replacement. So we would include that with the project. And right now, we are funded from North Shore down to Lakeside and. from North Shore down to Lakeside and are looking to get the funds from Lakeside to Olin approved. All right, moving a little bit west, we have Old Milton Road and, and underpass. So the Old Milton Road here in red is being hopefully resurfaced starting the summer, would extend into next year. The, the underpass here and kind of near Craig Avenue is proposed to replace a, an old pedestrian kind of stormwater culvert that people use. Not really meant for, for that activity, but people do use it in the area of the Tanaki's rest grocery store. We would replace that with a new head bike underpass that, that ties up, ties up into the path that was just built with University Row, University Row development and have that, that, that connection meet ADA ADA guidelines. All right, further, further west out here, so now we're out by Old Stock Road and the Belt Line. We've got a number of greenways that are being reconstructed by our stormwater department and looking to install paths with those greenway reconstruction. And I really think this is a, with the greenways creating is a, is a, is a great way for us to add to our bicycle infrastructure network. You know, particularly with us not being able to condemn land for new paths, this is, these are areas that the city owns already and are going to be reconstructed anyways. It'd be nice to carve out a a tent fee for a, for a path to go along with that and create some, some, some new networks. In this case, we've got a Pleasantview Road, which I'll show in the next slide, that's being reconstructed with a north-south path. And if we could connect that with, you know, through these greenways, with potentially a new bridge over the, over the Belt Line, we can, you know, really start to connect a lot of these, a lot of these areas, a lot of those residential areas to a lot of business areas. So this is just one area that's, that's stormwater utilities kind of focused on and, and we would like to associate some of our bike waves funds to build the paths in this area along with it. In, in, in fact, and potentially a new Belt Line Bridge at some point as well later on. All right, Pleasantview Road. So this is a joint project with the City of Milton that we've been working on. It's been funded with STBG federal funds. It is going to start this summer and it reconstructs from Highway 14 down to just north of, of Old Stock Road at Timber Wolf Trail here. And it will include new pedestrian and bike facilities, new, new boulevard road. Mostly a lot of the works in Middleton, but we do have a, a, a pretty decent chunk as well. So that's, that's going to start this summer and continue into next year. All right, West Town Path. So now going a little further southwest, we're, we're kind of near Mineral Point Road, High Point Road, Junction Road. We were awarded tap funds for this project here extending the portion of the path from Junction to Commerce. That would construct a new multi-use path on the north side of Plaza and Watts to connect the Junction Road path to the, the West Town Path and which would go all the way eventually to Whitney Way. So that's, that is, this is proposed to be bid with the West Main project. So two tap projects will be bid together and would be constructed next year. On Mineral Point, there's a couple of things planned here. So we were, we applied for funds to reconstruct the portion from the Belt Line to High Point Road. That pavement's getting in pretty rough shape, so we, we applied for the reconstruction there. That would be associated with a pretty large storm tour project that's underneath the road as well as implementing part of the traffic engineering as applied for Safety Improvement Program funds at the intersection of High Point and Mineral Point. So we would look to implement that component as well. With that 2027 project, we would also like to move that up. As I'll, I'll, I'll talk about it later in the, in the, in the slide so that perhaps it can be done sooner than 2027. We also have sidewalks improvements on the north side. You guys are probably well aware that as part of the BRT program, we're looking to create a facility on the north side of the road that's bikeable. Hoping to, hoping to do that along with the, with the BRT project. Okay, Park Street. Done a, a bit of work in the past on Park Street. We, we just recently did joint repairs to the concrete from West Wash to Olin on the north end here and also from the railroad down to Badger. So there's this one stretch here in Green from Olin Avenue to railroad that's beyond resurfacing anymore. It really needs reconstruction. So working with the DOT, since this is Route 151, to program that construction right now, WISDA has it shown in 2028. And we're hoping to advance that project if possible. I really don't think that pavement's been left until 2028. But just starting the, the process now with WISDA and, and with this project, we anticipate, you know, the future BRT Phase Two plans. So we've indicated to WISDA that we'd like to, you know, make sure that the project is, it works with the BRT plan as well as our South Madison Plan, which shows that we need to significantly increase the pet bike facilities on Park Street corridor. So looking to get some kind of, hopefully, a multi-use path on that project as well. Cannibal Path. This project is very likely, due to the big climate, going to be bid this summer, but allowed to be extended construction into 2023. That would include a new path from Fish Hatchery Road along the rail line on the north side of the rail and then up through behind the right middle school and with a new bridge over Winger Creek connecting into the Winger Path. So again, that's, that's the last phase of the Cannibal Path and it'll be a nice, very nice connection. Again, we were, we're, we're thinking that it would probably start construction this, this, this summer fall and, or probably more likely this fall and be finished in the summer of 2023. Okay, now jumping over to the east side. Got the Autumn Ridge Path that is a new new proposed, proposed new path from Milwaukee Street along some of the highstands, park, existing paths and then through, through the street network here and then with a, a new path off of Cynican Circle and over Highway 30 connecting Bigler Road. And what this does is, is kind of starts to pull into these, these northeastern neighborhoods and get them onto Portland Parkway where there's a, an existing bridge over Highway 51 and over to Dawes Street and then into our, our Darbo Path and Cap City Path. So kind of an extension of, off of that Cap City Path to try to reach these northeastern areas. This was awarded funds by STBG and right now we're, we're, we have shown in 2024, there's a, there's a slight possibility that could be even advanced to 2023 possibly. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. Atwood Avenue. This is a reconstruction from Fair Oaks Avenue all the way to Cottage Grove Road. Would be reconstructing the existing four lane segment or cross section into a three lane cross section with a new multi-use path along the, on the park and potentially all the way to Cottage Grove Road. We have a PIM scheduled for this in March 22nd, so just a little over a week. And hoping to implement some final tweaks to the plan and get that ready for WISDA. Submitted to WISDA so they can bid it and build it starting in 2023. This includes a new pet bike bridge over the Starkweather Creek. And as I mentioned, a lot of nice, a lot of nice pet bike improvements, a lot of nice crossing enhancements with flashers and mediums. A big improvement over, over the existing Atwood Avenue. This one is a new one in the tip, Hermione Pet Bike Bridge. So this is a new, new bridge over Starkweather Creek along Hermione Street. This was a direct request from one of our neighborhood resource teams. A lot of, a lot of folks in, in this area of the, of the city like to walk across and get to the library area here along East Washington Avenue. And we've seen a lot of people just walking through the creeks in this location. So we're looking to, to install a new pet bike bridge over the, over the creek so they don't have to do that or go down to Milwaukee or Darbo. A little more direct connection for a lot of these folks. Troy Drive Bridge, this one we were recently awarded WISDA Freight Rail Grant for. So, so we'll be reconstructing this bridge. The Troy Drive Railroad Bridge. So we'll be reconstructing the rail bridge over the roadway so that we can span the entire roadway and allow for two sidewalks on both sides and hopefully a street with bike lanes. Right now, if you've seen that area, it's a, it's a pretty tight cross section that the bridge only allows for two-way traffic, has a, has a dark culvert for pedestrians and, and no, no bike facilities at all. And also the bridge is, is currently a clearance is very low so that that inhibits certain emergency vehicles to, to get through there. So, so this would be reconstructed, we're hoping in 2023, it's a good, good chance we can still make that. And get that built next year. If not, the latest it would be is 2024. All right, so in addition to those major projects that we have listed, with all the federal funds, we do have our, our programs where we reconstruct streets program and our pavement management program. So what Phil was kind of focusing on in the beginning of the presentation was scoring our, our reconstructed streets. Right now we have 4.1 miles scheduled for 2023. A number of streets there listed as proposed. This would be reconstruct streets, so that's when we completely pull out the base, we completely redo the pavement, we do all the curb and gutter, fireplace all the sidewalks or install new sidewalks if, if the project is approved of that. So it's kind of a full, full replacement program. With, and then we have our pavement management program. This is kind of our resurfacing program where we, we don't do full replacements. We just kind of try to replace the, the top layer of the pavements. In a lot of cases, sometimes we do some utilities underneath as well. So it, in, in some cases, it, it looks to a bystander like it, like it may be a reconstruct, but really a lot of times what we're doing is just that top layer of pavement to try to save some money. These streets are in a little better condition. They're not ready quite for a reconstruct yet. But with that program, as, as Alder Foster mentioned, we, we have our, our chip sealing and crack sealing contracts that really get that a lot of mileage in the city that helps maintain our, our pavements and keeps the, keeps the pavement in a good enough state that they don't just fall apart and need full reconstructions. As you can see, we can really hit a lot of, a lot of mileage with this program for less money versus the reconstruct program where those predators are, are quite expensive. So we have a number of streets proposed here with the program for 2023. Again, looking to chip seal anywhere between 15 and 70 miles, track seal between 50 and 100 miles and, and resurface, plain resurface of five miles. Bike Waves Program is another program where we resurface our, our bike paths. We're getting we're getting pretty caught up, but we've been trying to make sure that we hit all the five out of 10 rated paths in the, in the city and getting pretty close with last year's program and this year's program to achieving that, although there's always new five rated streets that show up out of nowhere on me. So right now we're proposing for sure the Elder Park Path. And then I also want to review all the six rated paths this spring and, and see if we need to touch up on, on any of those. Usually we have enough money in the program to help with some of these other small, new path constructions. So one of the things we're, we're looking at with the 23 funds is potentially Dawes Street Crossing, again, that, that Wexford Greenway that I showed earlier, path lighting and Ryandell Park. And possibly in the future, looking at Tacho Drive and, and Glenwood Park connection among, among a, a number of other candidates. The Sidewalk Program is another part of our budget where we fund repairs to existing sidewalks. Around the sea, we try to hit one to two districts each year and get through the year on a 10-year cycle. So this year we'll be in all their Vidiveer's districts. Next year we have proposed Alder Abbas and Yazi's district. So we'll be looking at, this is, so in this program, we walk around and inspect the sidewalks and replace any broken sidewalks, trip hazards, any back pitch sidewalk that doesn't drain correctly. So that sort of thing. So that is again, 2023 doing District 12 and 18 and then moving to 11 and 19 in 2024. All right, so the last thing I wanted to cover with you guys is bill funding. So the bipartisan infrastructure law did has a number of funding opportunities throughout its, its program. The first one that's kind of coming across our desk is the STP Urban or STP Block Grant Funds. They have submitted two different funding opportunities for us to apply for. And the first one is, is pretty limited. It's, it's for immediate projects that are ready to essentially ready, totally complete by August 1st of this year. So there's not many, not many folks that can get a project ready for WISDA funding in a matter of four months. So it's really, really just projects that are either already complete or already funded. Already funded and have no environmental issues, no uh real estate issues, no um utility issues. But we are tasked with uh applying by April first, there's about two point one million dollars available in our NTO area. And uh some of the projects that we think um. Could fit in this request would be an increase of funds to our existing STP urban projects, so right now we have. University Avenue and Pleasant View uh that are slated to start construction this year. And would fit into this category and, you know, we could uh hopefully get um. The increased uh funding on those projects, which would reduce our geo borrowing for those two projects. Another one would be Autumn Ridge Path that I mentioned before, this is already funded uh for twenty five, uh twenty six. But could ask that to be moved up and finish those plans by August. Uh and have it built next year. This would be a heavy lift to do, but uh if uh that was everybody's um primary goal, that um. Uh you know, I think, you know, the city, the, the department could uh. Go after it on that and, and get that plan ready to, to bid by August. It's uh. I, I, I did it once before with the Obama Fund, so we had two projects back then that we uh put together in, in lightning fast uh. A mode and I, 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 I think we can do that again with, with Autumn Ridge Path. Some other possibilities that I'm less confident in, but I, I thought I'd just bring them up is uh Atwood Avenue, um again, this is already funded. Costs much more than two million dollars, so it, it doesn't really fit the, fit the category quite well and um. There's another issue with that, with that, there's a uh. Uh. Um an earmark that we're trying to have associated with the project, which would require it to be. Uh in the same category and um. Uh constructed uh or, or turned in by August as well. So I guess my, my point is that um we might get this one anyways, uh without even applying for the bill of funds, um. Another option is possibly a, a straight up resurfacing project where we. We don't have uh really any other things to do, um like, you know, uh changing a lot of the sidewalk raises or. Uh changing a lot of the um. Uh 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 alignments or the, the pigment markings in the project, you know, we don't have. A lot of time to uh uh. Put that kind of thing together to have a project already turned in with WISDA by August, so. Again, I think our, our best chances for success are, are two of these first options uh for this original, or for this. Federal fiscal year twenty twenty two solicitation. But next solicitation that came out. Is for uh federal fiscal year twenty three to twenty six projects, in this case, we have a little more flexibility, they, they're allowing. For uh, you know, a regular project that has design and, and utility issues um to, to apply for. They have a uh essentially the same amount of funding, two million times four years of, of uh construction, so eight million available. And this is due in June third. So we have a few more candidates um uh for this uh supplemental. And uh Autumn Ridge Path again is, is one of them, um to move it up uh to twenty four. Um we have the John Owen Drive Lakeside to Olin Stretch, that's not uh currently uh funded yet. We have a West Town Path, there's portions from uh High Point to Yamman that would complete the West Town Path that I think could be a. A big, a really good candidate for this, we've applied for that before uh for tap funds and it was, it scored well, but uh. It costs too much, so um might be a good candidate for, for this, might be a perfect candidate for this uh supplemental. Now Mineral Point Road, that section I showed uh could be moved up. Uh potentially to an earlier year, maybe to tie in with the uh the BRT project. Uh we have a stretch of Pleasant View Road that was designed with the, the current project. Um and is, is got an approved environmental document already, so this is from Mineral Point to Old Sauce, that's the. South of the existing project that's starting uh this, this summer. Uh we have a Cap City Path Segment Six, um uh Tom spoke about this a little bit earlier, that uh. Might be a good chance that we uh finally have the, the right way to. Or uh real estate rights to get this, get this work done and to build the uh path from Waggin Hill to I thirty nine. Um and then we have a bunch of tap projects that we uh did propose back in January, um. I think that uh came before this board, uh but. Any one of those that may not have been selected would certainly be eligible uh for this, this uh program uh solicitation as well, so. A lot of good candidates, I think uh for this one that's due in June third, we don't have to decide right now, but wanted to get those uh before you folks to, to think about. Alright, I think that is uh the end of my uh presentation and um. Uh if there's any questions or comments or project suggestions, um good time.
Thanks, Chris, um. Comments, questions or suggestions? Alder Koster, go ahead, please.
Um a couple uh quick things related to the, the, the earlier question of tip and safe streets, et cetera. So one thing that um would be worth just calling out and it made me think of it with all, what you shared right now is. Um we've, I think, really enhanced our, the projects that we do do. We've always looked at them as opportunities to put in a bike lane or something, but I think in the last, you know, several years, we've just really. Started investing much more in those and that was one of the key recommendations of the Safe Streets Mass Report, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and it's clear that. Even while these projects are being driven by utility, et cetera, uh they're often just really great opportunities to do safety improvements, et cetera. Um the other recommendation from that report was to try and kind of look more like corridor. Wide, you know, and not just focus on like one block here and there. So one uh quick question I had at, in the downtown map was for, so it looks like Wilson between Broom and. Pickney or I guess King Street perhaps, um to Butler, I think, is that what was shown? For twenty three?
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see the, the Butler to um Blair section.
Yeah.
I wouldn't really hope to see in the, in the five-year tip and, I mean, ideally it'd be like as soon as possible, so. Uh maybe just get that on the radar and think about where, you know, may not, maybe too much to add into that project, maybe there's a way to make it work. Um and then on the other end as well, from um Brooms, also on Wilson, from Broom. To, to Bassett, um so that was also identified in the Bassett Street um. Kind of study and there was some concrete work there that's needed around that intersection, but that would then. Get us uh essentially a cycle track all the way from Blair Street to. Uh to Bassett, so um maybe just give some thought to those and see what, what, what would be a recommendation for when those could get maybe added in or, or what?
Yeah, that, that is something that I know Jim and I have uh talked about possibly even including in these projects, um. Um definitely, I think this one's more solid, the twenty twenty three, I think, you know, working with uh. The developer, there's a slight chance that this might go to twenty four, but uh we would uh. I think, I don't think this, this uh. Either one of those two countries is ready for like a pavement rehab yet, but um uh we think we can do the. The cycle track uh with the project regardless and um and just get that implemented so that that is continuous when those three projects are done.
Awesome, um and then I just wanted to check, I think you, when you were talking about the Park Street uh project, you're saying that there, you're. You know, there's waiting on state funding, right, was kind of the big theme, um but and then it sounded like you said, you know, a. A goal to find a way to get a, a multi-use path in that quarter, or is that, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so they, they finally have uh funded it, that is uh. Always the hardest hurdle to get over, um to get them to put it in the program, so now, now the step is, is kind of scope the project out and. And we have indicated to them that, you know, we, we intend to. To put a, a, an enhanced bike facility on this corridor and to have that part of the project.
Well, that's really great to hear, I know it's, I mean, it'll be a challenge just putting everything in there and with BRT and everything else, but um. You know, when we've, we've done a, a few things or in the process of Cannonball extension, you know, there's work planned for. A bike boulevard on the, on the other side of South Park Street, but the reality is we gotta get, we gotta get that facility on South Park itself. Um it's the only way to connect that community and if we're gonna talk about equity and. Transportation and bike access, et cetera, that one just, it seems like a absolute priority, so I'm encouraged to hear you talking about it. Um I think the only other thing on your last part about the, some of the uh other funding available. I mean, I, Autumn Ridge will be another huge connection point, so I'm certainly supportive of trying to move that forward if you, and it sounds like it might be a. Uh tough to complete as a sense, um but you know, there was a, a first round of public engagement around that, you know, it's been a few years now, but I mean, there was. Pretty broad support, you know, obviously just a couple of questions around some of the details, need to get worked out, but I would certainly be. Encouraging of, of trying to get that one moving just because it'll, it'll provide such a, such a connection for all the neighbors out there. Um and I think that, oh yeah, just an ask if. Could a, could a like a high-res version of the full map PDF get maybe sent out to us and.
Oh, yes.
You know, that'll start, that'd be great.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any further um comments, questions, feedback? Okay, um, oh, Alder Harington McKinney, go ahead, please.
Uh thank you very much, um I, I, I wanna add that when I first um started looking at the process, I saw. Um a lot of, of adjustments in terms of, of bikeability and um I drove through Madison and. And really looked at some of the really narrow paths that bikers have to take. And um I, I, I get it, I get it and I understand when you're talking about public safety and so. I'm looking at the whole design differently, um because we do want it to be um. Inclusive in terms of all modes of transportation, but I am really looking at your, um not your. But I am looking at um bike accept, uh bike accessibility in a different. Um in, in a different light, because literally I would, I said, if I'm, if I'm biking and if I was driving along certain streets. I would be concerned about public safety, so I have to acknowledge, acknowledge when I'm in a, in a good place and acknowledge when I'm, I'm wrong, but I am. Uh I am looking more um at what it means in terms of modality and uh bikeability, so I just wanted to put that into the space.
Thank you, Alder Harington McKinney, um are there any further comments, questions or discussion, feedback? Alright, seeing none, that was the last item for the evening. So entertaining motions to adjourn. Brandon, thank you, is there a second? Second by Chris, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting for the evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Those know. It appears to be unanimous, we're adjourned, thank you, have a good week.
Thank you.